All meeting doorers, the Ashland Board of Commissioners for the meeting on April 24th. If you will stand, we'll ask Commissioner Goot to do a reification and Mr. Mike Wirth to do our pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we ask and invite your Holy Spirit to enter our chambers and preside over our meeting today. Lord, we are thankful for your faithfulness to our city. We ask for your wisdom and guidance over this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Blessed our city manager, our staff and employees, and those that attend us today, we pray always in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion to receive and file agenda is presented to us.
So move.
Second. Any discussion or changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion to receive and file the minutes of that regular board meeting on March the 27th.
So move.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We'll move into our hearings and reports, and I guess I'll start off. First of all, I want to thank Sean Murray and his crew. Amber, you all did a great job with the Easter egg hunt, and we appreciate that. And we're down there, I was there, and it wasn't, didn't see any complaints, no crying children or anything, so that was great. But please pass that on to all the crew and let us, let them know that we appreciate it. First Friday is coming up, May the 2nd, and so get ready for that, that'll go into gear. And also, Makers Market will actually fire up on June the 14th. It'll be from 10 to 2 down on Broadway Square. I do have a proclamation that I want to read on fair housing, was asked to do that. Whereas the City of Ashland recognizes the importance and fair equality housing of about all residents and affirms its commitment to the principle of fair housing and set forth in the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and whereas the Ashland Assistive Housing Authority is dedicated to ensuring that no individual or family is denied the opportunity to apply or receive housing assistance based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, or national origin. And whereas the Community Block Grant CBD program established in 1974 continue to support the development of sustainable communities in Ashland by improving housing, living, and economic conditions, particularly with the low and moderate income individuals. Whereas home value reflects a 7.6% increase over the last year, highlighting the need for continued effort to ensure housing affordable for all residents. Now therefore, I Chuck T. Charles, the mayor of Ashland, Kentucky, alongside the Ashland Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. And that is probably a true dedication of what we're, we're all about. Just a couple other things that 17th Street entrance is open and
Amen.
After probably 2022 roughly that that was closed off, but we're excited about that, and I think there's one piece that we're waiting to finish it up, but the public can enter there now. Exciting news about our wastewater treatment plant. We should be going out for bid May the 2nd, is that correct, Mark?
It's actually May the 1st.
May the 1st.
May the 1st, and we have a, just to give you a little bit of a timeline, a pre-bid meeting scheduled for the 14th of May, where we'll bring all prospective contractors in and kind of walk through in general what the process is.
Okay.
And then the bid will open on 7th of July 10th, and that's because of the, kind of been shifted around because of the holiday weekend, or the holiday
Okay.
in Penn State, and also some other projects that are fairly large, you know, being a little bit more debt, will give contractors an opportunity to relook at their bid if they choose to do so.
Excellent. I guess that'll be, be May the 13th, and, but that'll be great. Excellent. Just a brief note about the, we're still working on the Conference Center. As a matter of fact, our plan, timeline of what we're going to do now, by the May 13th board meeting, we've instructed our AP3 architects to, to give us a, two samples exactly what we want at the two different locations. We'll give everything a month and do a survey to what the citizens and take comments, and a month from that time, we'll make the decision and move ahead with that project. But I understand that we may have some other comments on that, but Mr. Goot, let's start with you if you'd like to.
Well, welcome everyone. I just have a few announcements. We had two recent ribbon cuttings, now one at the mall with Pandora, and one just today, just a few minutes ago at Mark Porter, the new paint shop down there next to the car dealership, and got to meet him, and those are two great investments in our city. May's going to be a very busy month. May 1st, a week from today, is the National Day of Prayer at the museum at 8:30 in the morning. A week later, we have the ribbon cutting on the new UK KDMC emergency room entrance that they've been working, it's a $168 million project, and that'll be at 11 o'clock on the following Thursday, and then repair fair coming up on the following Saturday on the 15th. So May is going to be a very busy month. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, you know, just to tag on to your, Mark Porter, you know, quizzing him, he's actually going to have additional 40 new jobs there, so that's new jobs that we're creating, so that's, that's exciting. Commissioner Martin?
I just want to join you, Mayor, in accolades to the Parks Department in the flawless Easter egg hunt, and it looked like a wonderful day, and everybody had a glorious time. You, certainly Sean, you and Amber did a great job, we appreciate it, and the rest of the department. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Reimer?
Yes, so thanks everybody for being here today. I want to mention Repair Fair still needs volunteers. I believe the day is actually May 17th for that, it's the 3rd Saturday of May. We still need volunteers, whether you can swing a hammer, or paint a fence, or just show up in moral support, but we look forward to that being another great event. This is the 24th year, so hopefully having another good year, so that's all I've got.
Great. Commissioner Rindro?
Well, I'd ask the mayor for, to allow me to spend to balance my time later on in the meeting, I would like to just say, I would like for code enforcement not to cite people for grass and lawn violations till after the first full week of June, to allow for some pollination via birds, hummingbirds, bees, butterflies, and then after the first full week of June, have at it, and ask again to spend some time later on in the meeting, maybe speaking on another subject.
Okay, all right. All right, hearing any other, and we'll move to our city commissioners, or city managers.
I have no.
Okay, then we can move right into our audit presentation.
The front, the first this year, so we're close to the front. I'm Anthony Workman with Kelly Galloway, Smith Goolsbee. I was the audit partner, director on the audit again this year, and I want to appreciate, go ahead and say I appreciate the Finance Department and all the help that everybody puts in on getting the audit completed. If you probably have the book there in front of you that was passed out, or electronic copy, this is a, comes back to the financial statements and the whole audit package. Nice, nice thick reading whenever you get the opportunity. I'll go through and hit a few of the highlights of the audit, if at any point in time somebody has a question, concern, or anything like that, I'll do my best to answer it, feel free just to interrupt me, no problem whatsoever. So about three pages in, into it, or you'll, four pages over, it's our independent auditors report. This is the product of the audit. It states we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the city as of June 30th, 2024, and our opinion's right there in the second paragraph, that states in our opinion, the financial statements of the city present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the activity of the, of the city for the fiscal year, for that fiscal year ending. So it's what's considered an unmodified or a clean, or a clean audit opinion. It goes on to state the basis for our opinion, that we performed our audit in accordance with all relevant standards, and that management, specifically the Finance Department, I would say, would be responsible technically for the financials, and that on the following page, our responsibility is to issue, issue the opinion, which like I said, it is considered an unmodified or, or a clean audit opinion. Starting on page four through 18, I won't go through this, but I will point it out to the Commissioners, it's the Management Discussion and Analysis. It's, it's actually prepared by the Finance Department, and it does provide a good analysis of the activity for the year, and so it would, I would suggest reading, reading that, if you were going to read anything, I would suggest reading this, it'll provide you a good, good summary of the activity for the fiscal year. But that is prepared by the Finance Department. And we go through as part of our audit, we read it to make sure it doesn't conflict with, with the financial statements themselves. So starting on page 19 and 20, said I'll just hit a few, few high points. This would be the Statement of Net Position, which is essentially the balance sheet for the city. If you were, look at the city as a business, so it includes all long-term debt, all long-term assets. The retirement plan liabilities are now required to be included on government end of these financial statements, it does include that. So on page 20, if you were to look at the city as a business, at the bottom of the page, you'll see you had total net position of 56 million, and that you believe is a slight increase of 7 million over last year, but that, like I said, that consolidates all funds. And it's a really a, I would say not an operational view, it's hard to look at it this way, this is a required statement, but when you see, well, we have 56 million dollars in net position, that includes all fixed assets, so all the roads, all the property and equipment, you mentioned utility plant, and offsetting with your long-term debt. So like I said, it is really a business view, or, or really a long-term view. There's a couple of the items on here, though, I will point out, the net pension and net OPEB liabilities, I've mentioned these in the past, these are the retirement liabilities for the county employees mostly, but it does also include the Police and Fire Fund and the utility employees. And I believe for the utility and the Police and Fire, there's about 6.4 million dollars of retirement liabilities expected to be paid out over the life of the remaining retirees or their spouses. So on the, for the other ones, altogether, net pension liability, 61.2, majority of that is the county retirement. City, of course, can't really do anything based on to decrease that liability any other than pay the actual rate that's required of you. And looking at the rates for the past few years, or what's actually coming up for 25, and now 26, so the rate for hazardous employees and non-hazardous, hazardous would be your Police and Fire, and the non-hazardous would be the other employees of the city, both of those went down for 25. If your payroll remained the same, there should have been basically a cost savings for 20 fiscal year 25 of about 650,000 over 24. And if you look at it for 26, it actually goes down again, and based on that same payroll, it'd be a decrease of about a million dollars over 24. So personally, I'm glad to see those rates decreasing, it's been, it's been hard on a lot of the local governments. There for a while, they just kept going up and up and up, with even some of the state plans, it was over 50% is what they were actually contributing. So, but they have been going down. So fiscal year 26, that rate for non-hazardous back down to about 18%, and it was in the twenties, and for hazardous, it's, let's see, 35%. So that is expected to be a cost savings that you'll be able to see on, for next year. So on to a statement that may actually, I would think, be more relevant, page 24, more of an opera, like I said, more operational, the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures and Changes in the Fund Balance. This will be similar to how revenue and expenditures are actually budgeted for the city, and actually how they are recorded as they come in. You'll see the General Fund, the first column, or the second column there, had a fund balance of 11.6 million, which, I mean, that does sound pretty good, and then you, but when you look at total, like intercompany, or inter, if not intercompany, interfund balances, there's actually about well over 10 and a half million due from other funds at that point in time, that actually would bring this down, so it, like I said, it, it sounds like the General Fund at the end of the year had 11 million dollars, but it actually was due from, there was 10, little, over 10 and a half million due from other funds at that point in time, so. For the year, though, the General Fund did have an increase of $973,000 before any transfers, but there were 2.4 million dollars of transfers to other funds. That, majority of that, I believe, was the Recreation Fund, helped support the Recreation Fund, and a part of it is related to the bus system, as far as matching on the grants. I believe that there was about, got it here, 700,000, yeah, 700,000 went to the bus system as far as grant matching for, for the support of it. The Tax Increment Fund next, for the TIF district, right next to the General Fund, it had a decrease of $100,000, and just to point out, the fund balance on it is actually negative, that 1.2 million, that's essentially money that the General Fund has fronted that, that TIF, TIF fund to repay that, repay the associated bond that goes along with it. So during the year, there's 3, $300,000 in bond payments as part of the, as part of the TIF district. The last column you'll see over there is on the Capital Projects, on the Capital Projects Fund, there was seven point, almost 7.7 million dollars expended in capital projects out of that fund, the majority of it being related to the Winchester Avenue project, partially offsetting that, 4.2 million dollars of grant income, there was grant income associated with that to help pay for the Winchester, Winchester Avenue project there. There are three, I believe, three new funds listed on here, if you were to compare this to last year, that's the State Tax Increment Finance Fund, the Brownfield Grant, and then there's a Conference Center Grant on there as well. So the State Tax Increment Finance is to account for the state TIF money that comes through, low over, almost 500,000 dollars received, none of it was expended during the year. And the Conference Center Grant, there was a, I believe there's, I think it's a million dollar grant that is set up to go into that, but there was, there was nothing expended under that, under the. So a few other items, like I said, I wanted to point out, starting on page, I believe, back to it, I apologize, I have flags on everything, but this, 43, it starts the notes to the financial statements. First couple of notes go through the significant accounting policies of the city, which would be very similar to any other city in the state, if you were to compare your financials over to, say Lexington or Louisville, or any other local, local city, they would look very similar. These are considered to be generally accepted accounting policies, but they would look very similar to, to other local governments. But a few of the notes, I, like I said, I will not hit all of these, but I will point out a few. On page 53, it's the footnote six for capital assets. Let's see, total additions for the year, if you look at it, net was about 9 million dollars. Lot of had to do with the Winchester Avenue work as well. That's for, that's for the governmental activities. On the following page is the business type activities, which is essentially your utility fund, your recreation fund, bus system, and with that, there was about 6.3 million in capital additions during the year. Majority of that being related water line, and I believe for, one for the Recreation Fund, you had the Dawson Pool, the pool liner on the, on that being reworked as part of the, part of the year as well. Starting on page 55, and I'm just going to point out, footnote seven and eight are on retirement plans. Like I said, there's a lot of information in there dealing with, with the county retirement plan that the, the city does participate in, and the Police and Fire Retirement Plan on those. There's, going through assumptions, it goes to about 13 pages altogether, but there's a lot of information in there. I will not go into that. The other one I wanted to hit was on long-term obligations, though, page 69, it's footnote number nine. It provides a summary of the activity on the debt obligations outstanding during the year, divided between your governmental activities and your business type. Overall, low over 16 million dollars in general obligation bonds outstanding, with about one and a half million dollars paid down, there wasn't any new bond issues issued during the year. And on the business type activities, which is primarily related to the utility fund, of course, 15, low over 15 million dollars, with 1.9 million paid down during the year. It does follow up with that, and within that footnote, basically a payment schedule for every, for each one that you could see, how each one of those line items, or each one of those outstanding obligations will be paid over the next several years until So over another item, I mentioned the General Fund being owed quite a, you know, quite a bit of money, or inter, interfund items over on page 74, there's a summary of interfund transactions where you can see where those liabilities are, are due from for the General Fund at the, as of June 30th, of course. So the General Fund was due from the utility fund, 5.2 million, Recreation Fund, 2.9, Bus System, 1.6, those were the top, essentially about the top three right there. But that is a summary of how it looks as of the end of, as of the end of the year. I'd like to point this out over on page 76, under Risk Management, the footnote 14. At the bottom of the page, there's a table where, that summarizes the health insurance claims, it doesn't include all health insurance costs, but you'll see the current year claims column, health insurance, of course, still going up, the costs are, it was at 3.9 million last year, almost 4 million this year, for '24, it was at 4.6 million, so up about 660,000. Now this doesn't, that's, this is just the health insurance claims, doesn't include admin costs and a few other, few other items, but this is specifically on the claims section, but that, those costs do go, they go up during the year. So following this, there's, there are several tables back here related to retirement plan. When those, when these accounting standards came out for retirement plans, it exploded these reports for local governments, about 20, 25 pages, so really added to the beef and using up the paper. I will not, like I said, I will not go through those, but I will point out on page 103, the next schedule I wanted to, to show you, is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. So these are the federal awards that were spent through the city, federal money that was expended through the city during last year. The top one, of course, is the House Housing Choice Voucher Program at 4. The top one, of course, is the housing choice voucher program at 4.2 million. And then there was highway planning and construction, which I believe was related to, to, mostly to the Winchester Avenue project over there, 3.8 million. And then there was still some coronavirus, some COVID relief money that was expended during the year. Altogether, almost 1.2 million. Now, those were actually the three major programs we test. As part of a single audit, we are required to test high-risk or programs that haven't been tested in several years, or new programs, over a certain dollar threshold. So we did test those three programs as part of our, as part of our audit for compliance. We can't, as far as any issues go, we didn't really have anything on the COVID relief or on the highway planning and construction. We did have a few items, and they're detailed over on the voucher program over on page 111. So we did have a couple of findings related to that. That program mostly related to waiting list preferences, getting into details of it, and tenant documentation on how, bringing in a tenant and how that tenant is documented in there. We do, we have recommendations in there, we went over these with, with management and with the director of the Section 8 program as well for correction. But these right here were compliance findings, it didn't, they didn't reach a level where it's considered to be material non-compliance, so that would have been a different level and a different type of report we'd have to get to. But these are considered other compliance findings that we're required to report.
And we have no problem meeting these recommendations?
And that, those are, those two items there were the only findings or that we were required that need to be reported within this, so were related to that. Thought I went through that pretty quick, even though if it's, it's a large report, mouth is dry, but does anybody have any questions or, or concerns or anything? I can do my best to...
Well, we know what we have to do, but, I mean, it's just always looking for the letter that is in a good standing.
Yeah.
And then get down into the weeds with it, but I think we've, we've studied our finances enough, at least this commission has, we know what we need to do.
I don't think I, I probably haven't told you anything you didn't already know.
Well, yeah.
So.
Tony, we appreciate your presentation. Having just gotten the audit, if we have any questions after today, you'll be available.
Oh, yes, of course. So, I mean, my, you know, phone number, email, Tony and Michelle will be glad to send it to you. Feel free to call me or email me with anything you have.
Thank you.
That's no problem at all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You all may need a motion to accept the audit.
So move, move we accept the audit as presented.
First and the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good. All right. We'll move on to our public participation. If any one of you would like to address the commission, you can come to the podium and state your, your name and your address. You'll have five minutes to, to speak, and go ahead.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you all for your time. I know you're very busy, very busy people, and I want to apologize, I don't have enough folders for everyone. I made my folders a while back, and I've, I've run out, but I have enough for every other one, and then it's, I have folders to talk about. Basically, it's just to help me, keep me in line, so I can change subjects and know what I'm talking about. But I'm David Bland, I'm with the IUPAT, I'm the political director for the painters union, and I'm with Rodney Skaggs. Rodney lives here. I actually am from Parkersburg, West Virginia. Rodney's from Catlissburg?
I live in Grayson.
Grayson. So, so he is from here, and he takes care of this area. So in my folder, I was just going to open up and talk about a few things that I just wanted to report to you. I didn't know what you knew about the IUPAT, so what I do, I go around and I talk to public officials about what we do and who we are. So what I'll do is, in the folder, the very first thing that I talk about is the Helmes the Hard Hat programs. And not only is the IUPAT in it, this is, this is a program where our veterans get out of the military, and as long as they get out in good standings and, and within one year of them leaving the military, not only can they do direct hire with IUPAT, but the sheet shows you that just about every other union trade they can do direct hire with. And what the, what Helmes Hard Hat does is it will take an apprentice who makes a lower wage, but as long as they follow the curriculum, the federal government will make those wages up and pay for that apprentice. So as his wages here and adjournments here, as he gets further along and he gets raises, the federal government cuts down, but it, so it helps our veterans, and it gets them good pay to start with, so it's, so they don't have to start out at a lower, and, and it's a direct hire. And I just say that because there's a lot of, some unions are harder to get in than others, but with this direct hire, you can skip a lot of the stuff and go right to the unions if you're a military veteran and been, recently been out within one year. So I always like to bring up Helmes the Hard Hats. My nephew went through the program when he got out of the military. Oh, the second one, I just briefly mentioned, Job Corps. Now, this is a federally funded program, and it operates out of Charleston, West Virginia, and it takes troubled youth that need a little bit of help, and so they go there and stay, and, and when they finish this program, most of them end up with a driver's license and a high school diploma, and when they finish their whole program, they can do direct hire in the apprenticeship program for the IUPAT and the carpenters union. So I like to bring that one up as well, and it isn't just for a West Virginia thing, it's for, for anybody that would like to send people there for Job Corps. The other, the other thing on the left was just our, I'm not even going to go through it, but I just wanted to say, we do a quarterly newsletter for our members. So I put a copy of it in there for you to look at all the stuff that, that we've been through. And I hear you just talking about volunteers. We have one here, we have one up in Ohio at Dillonville, I think, up near Steubenville, Ohio. And then we have three different projects in West Virginia where we take our members and our apprentices, and we, we go do a volunteer day to help the community with something, and I believe we're painting some signs in the city park here. That's our day of action that we do annually, and we're always looking for other projects that we can go help the community out with. On the right-hand side, this whole flyer is a short breakdown of the IUPAT. We have 2,500 members. Our training facility is 9,600 square feet up in Weston, West Virginia, and that's where all of our apprentices go to. It doesn't matter if they're from Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia, or Kentucky, or Ohio, our training center's there. The second one is the trades represented, it just kind of talks about, we're not just painters, we're also drywall finishers, glazers, which is glass installers, hydrovac workers, sign and display workers, and those are the crafts that we cover at the IUPAT. The next flyer is the elevated water tank, so the, we are still working on it, we just got a grant from our union, actually, $150,000 grant. We're going to have the only water tank painting training center that we know of in the United States and in Canada. So it's taken a while to get the curriculum and get everything rolling, but we're trying to set the standards, so when your water tank's painted, if contractors would send their people through this, that they would be better off, they'd be safer, they'd do a better job, and they would know a lot more of the ins and outs. But that will be at our training center in Weston where we have the water tank. The next flyer is just the empowerment of women, and I bring this up at every meeting. We don't have enough women in our trades, but studies show that women are actually more in tune and they're better at details and a lot of things than men, so they make really good painters and drywall finishers because of their attention to detail. So I bring that up saying, you know, we accept women, too. The problem is not enough show up to join, but we, we do have many women in our, in our trades. The next one's just a, it's a graph wheel, and it just shows how you, you know, you use tax money, you take tax money, you hire local workers, the local workers spend the money in their local economy, they pay taxes there, they support the local businesses, and the city or county gets more money, and then they can reinvest in projects, and it's just a cycle. And it's basically showing when you hire out-of-area contractors, you just send all that money to their area, you're not helping your area. And, and I am 100% union guy, but we also support, as long as you hire local people, it's going to help the local economy, you know.
We certainly appreciate what you do and, and your willingness to volunteer here within our parks. We're excited about that, and if you're looking for more projects, we have more projects.
I'm, I'm sure we are, we probably have some. The next couple papers, one is a bridge contractor's list, and one is a paint contractor's list and general contractor. They are a little outdated, so what we'll do, we'll get the addresses, and we'll, me and Rodney, one of us or both of us will send you updated list on our contractors. So I have three different lists in there for bridge painting, tank painting, and just general construction and work. The other one is bid criteria, it says for county projects, but it's, it's actually just a generic form, and I just present this to, to cities and counties and any government officials, and specific bid criteria can help keep bad contractors out. So I, this one has 15 different things that would help. So we've negotiated ones with the county of, Washington County, Ohio. I've sat down with them, and then the ones they like, they keep, and the ones they don't like, we just scratch them. But it's, it's just, it's a base to start on that you look at to maybe help local contractors get work and keep qualified local contractors working. It's not really, you don't have to follow it exactly. The last two was our coating and corrosion expo that we just had, I think we had...
240 people and 45 vendors.
Yeah, at 200, yeah, about 250 people and 45 vendors, but we had some people from, then we...
I think we had a couple people from City of Rassell who works at the water department.
That works at the water department, come and attend, because we offer free courses, and it's an annual expo that we do every year. And then the last one was the, the golf outing that we have the day before, and it's our fundraiser for patch, it's Painters and Allied Trade Children's Hope. So all the money we raise only goes to children's society, children charities, so that when we have our, you know, our patch foundation golf course, or golf, golf outing, me and Rodney was on the team. We finished fourth, but there was only five teams, so. Next year, we plan on doing better, and we'll have more people, because it was our first golf outing. That was just all I had, the information. I'm not here to ask for anything today, I just thought I would share all this, and it was nice to meet everyone, and see if you have any questions for me.
Again, we, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for your willingness to volunteer, to help beautify our parks that will save taxpayers money and make our parks beautiful and a place that people want to come to, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bland.
Thank you. Can I just leave this other one here, so you'll have another one?
Yep, I'll take it.
Would anyone else like to address the commission?
Thank you for your time.
Mike Maynard, Hillcrest Bruce Mission, 1819 Eloise Street, and wanted to just give an update. So two years ago, well, it's been about a year and a half ago, that was the first round of the opioid, opioid settlement abatement money that the city had received, and had entertained projects and bids from agencies and organizations in the community. We were very blessed and fortunate to, to get a very generous investment from you all in the program. And so it's been a year and a half, and so we had, we had submitted a two-year program with you all with the funding, and so we're about six months away from finishing up that initial round of funding. And so I know every year, there's six, seven different, of the abatement funds that the city gets, and I think it just, it just collects up and then we, we get it out, so. But one, one of the things that, that we looked at, and originally, Hillcrest Bruce Mission, we weren't in the business of working with folks that were struggling with addiction or, or the compounding issues with that. But, you know, as you, as you get into helping people, you find, especially in our area, there's a significant population that, that they struggle with stuff, and it's the cause of the opioid addiction. And so, so we, we just started doing different programs that would help with that. And so, you know, and just numbers alone, you know, don't, don't tell the, the whole story of it. And so, so the, the different areas that, that we had requested funding, one was for personnel to be able to have a peer support certified person on staff that would be there at the mission, not only just to work with folks in our neighborhood and in our community, but with our work placements that are being brought to us from K-TAP and Welfare and Food Stamp Program, through Mature Worker Program, through volunteers. And so, but we, we've been able to work. And so in that year and a half, over 60 folks that have come through our program have went into inpatient rehab. And so a significant amount of folks. And, and that's challenging, because for treatment to work, people need to want to go. And you can't make somebody want to go, you can't debate, you can't convince. And so, but we can help, sometimes we can help shape the environment to make them want to go. And so, and that's what we have really tried to focus on. And so a lot of those folks, and it's folks that have struggled for years to make the decision, when you think they've hit bottom, just wasn't far enough bottom, and people that, honestly, that you may have just given up on, because they, you've driven them to rehab and they've jumped out of the vehicle on the way there. Or they've come back and you've taken them, and they stayed one night. Or they come back a couple of months later, you take them somewhere else and they spent two nights. It is very easy to get discouraged and to maybe not offer as much help. But that, that example is, is a, is a real person. And it's a real person that in a year's time, it wasn't until the sixth time that she found the right treatment place. And she's in sober living right now and has her kid back. And it's, it's amazing. The bulk of the folks that we help end up, they go to groups, they go to intensive outpatient, they get jobs, and with the support that we're able to provide and, and many, many agencies in, in the community, they're able to be fully restored and, and productive folks back in our community again. And so, and, and they get their kids back and they get jobs. And so, you have to have people to be able to work with people, and so, and, and have the right people. And so we appreciate the funding that has went, you know, for, for being able to provide that. It's also went to help with health needs, and we're very fortunate, Medicaid now pays for almost all of any needs that, folks that have been affected by opioids. And so, but we have helped 30 folks that were affected by opioids that, just for whatever reason the insurance wouldn't cover, didn't cover at all. And so 30 folks, and out of those 30, 22 of those folks were able to get gainful employment. And most of that deals with, you know, bad oral health and, you know, needing dentures and things like that. And we live, we have a lot of service jobs in this area, and, and if, and if you, if you don't have good teeth, it just, it hurts your prospects of getting a job, it just does. And so most of these folks, they want to get jobs, they want to be out here, but a lot of times, it's just a struggle with self-confidence and, and some embarrassment, and being able to help provide that, again, puts people to work, puts people back on the right track to, to be in good, good citizens here. And so it is, it is amazing, and like I said, it is, you all have made a very generous investment, and so we look forward to being able to continue this partnership with the city, and so that we can help people in our community who want to get help, to get them lined up. And so that we can help people in our community who want to get help, to get them lined up with where they need to go and to continue to support them through their whole journey. We have, we have two of our folks that have come through that are homeowners now. Not only are they sober, not only are they, do they have jobs, but they're homeowners now in our community, working to help others in the community. So just wanted to thank you again and provide an update because it's been a few months. And with the two years of this last funding round coming to a close, we would love the opportunity to talk further and to maybe get some further investment.
Thank you, Mr. Maynard, for that was that update.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Let's move on from our public participation into. Oh, there's somebody, I'm sorry.
My name is Nick Felty, I live at twenty-four, twenty-one Forest Avenue. And I wanted to come today to ask the commissioners to review and consider changing the ordinance that prohibits backyard chickens within the city.
Prohibits what, I'm sorry?
Backyard chicken keeping in the city. This is a hobby that's grown in popularity, obviously because of egg prices and other things around the country. Most of the cities in Kentucky allow it, Lexington and Louisville, Elizabeth Town, Bowling Green, there's very few that don't. And actually, out of the hundred and fifty most populated cities in the US, ninety-three percent allow it. Ashland was actually included in the ones that do allow it on the website I looked at because evidently if we have over five acres of land, it's allowed. I don't know who has five acres of land in the city, probably not more than a few people. There's a lot of benefit to the chicken keeping besides just the eggs, they eat insects. You can keep them on a relatively small plot of land, you know, six hens you can keep on, you know, six or eight feet by five feet in an enclosed run in a coop. They're, you know, they're relatively quiet, quieter than a dog or in some cases cats. And we have a lot of feral cats around here. And then they also divert a lot of food waste to, you know, they convert that to eggs and to compost. Diverts that from going to landfills, one chicken can convert, you know, ten pounds a month of food scraps. So, you know, six chickens, that's, you're looking at five hundred, six hundred pounds a year going to that. You know, I looked into what some of the regulations were in some of the other cities and some have none. Lexington doesn't have a limit on how many you can have or whatnot. I'm not really requesting that, I'm saying that, you know, there's no reason we can't have some rules in place to keep this from bothering and being a nuisance to our neighbors. A lot of cities have a maximum of six hens, Louisville it's five, five hens, one rooster. I'm saying no roosters, I understand that they're noisy and they're not necessary for egg production. A sturdy coop and a run, you know, storing feed in rodent-proof containers. Keeping a coop twenty feet from dwellings is reasonable, no slaughtering in city limits, that way we don't have people raising meat chickens. And then if we're going to let them out of those coops and runs, you have to have a permanently installed fence. And there could even be a permitting fee, you know, thirty, fifty dollars a year, I think would be reasonable. So it's something I hope you guys consider, I don't know what the next steps were to kind of get that into consideration for you guys, but I wanted to bring that up today. Thank you.
We'll actually look at that and see what kind of.
And maybe Mr. Wheeler in his spare time can come up with some options.
What's the ordinance on that, Councilor?
He's right, it's.
Yeah, it is, what he stated is correct. This chicken keeping came up not long after I took the Assistant City Attorney position in twenty nineteen. It was heard a few times, I believe, by code enforcement and the planning commission. There were discussions and proposals requested by members, I believe, of the public to change the ordinance to allow for keeping of chickens in certain conditions. One of the biggest issues that in trying to come up with some type of scheme that might even work for that was the enforcement side of it. And from the enforcement side of it, we're talking mainly who would enforce the requirements of the coops and the roosters and the hens and things like that. There was a financial component of that with personnel costs and things of that nature that was discussed. And I believe at the time the planning commission recommended not to go forward with any type of amendment. Believe it came before Mr. Goots' board and at that point it was decided not to move forward with any type of change. I don't know exactly how long ago that was, I'll have to look at that and we'll pull that information and we can send that out to you guys if you'd like it.
Okay. I think the major objection that I get from, and let me tell you, I used to raise chickens, but I lived on a farm. I lived on Alley Branch and I lived a good, not a long way, but a pretty good way from my neighbor. And then there's just certain things that, you know, maybe your neighbors might not be, you know, might not like that idea. I know there's some smell to it, some odor. I did weddings at my farm. One time it was a hot, a hot day that it rained and the wedding party came and said, does the smell cost any extra? You know, I mean, it was, it was quite a bit of odor associated with that. Then you have, we have a significant coyote problem. People don't realize there's packs of coyotes in Wildwood Park and over at the cemetery. You know, you're just asking for, you know, you're asking for trouble. Plus the stray dog problem we have, you know, we're overrun with dogs right now, the animal shelter is. I'm the Boyd County Chairman of the Health Department. And I think they came out at that time against it because of, because of the health issues also. So I'm just saying that that's what, you know, that's what has come before me before that I've heard. But I have no, I know what you're talking about, I like chickens, I like to raise chickens. My son, I just came in from Lexington, he raises chickens. That's where I get my eggs, by the way. And, but, and my daughter in La Grange raises chickens, but they live out. And I'm thankful for your email, keep on, you know, corresponding and so forth. I've been by your house, I know where you live and up on Forest Avenue. But those are the major objections that I see. The dogs, when you've got a dog that has a chicken taste in their mouth, you can't, you can't break that. I mean, you'll have Fifi coming from next door looking for chickens every time. So there's just some, some problems that are associated with inside the city limits that you're, that people in the county don't face.
From a procedural standpoint, it would need to go, because it's an ordinance change and a text amendment, we need to go first with the planning commission, there'd be a hearing and those would be the steps. And if Mr. Felty, I believe it was, if you'd like to contact me or wait around after the hearing or the meeting or whatever, I can, you know, direct you to the staff that you need to speak with on that. But I do want to let you know and this board know that it was not too long ago discussed in a similar fashion and a similar way and.
Mr. Felty, I appreciate the email that I received from you. I've also received emails from probably nearly a dozen other citizens in the community. So I appreciate your interest in this as well as theirs, so.
All right, any others?
Mayor's been brought to my attention that my request for code enforcement not to cite for lawn violations, the grass violations may need to be brought to vote.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
What are we voting on?
That we're not citing people for grass, not cutting the grass until June. To allow for pollination.
Until the first.
I heard that June, that's a long time.
Well, they call it no mo mai, so.
Not everybody gets what they want, Mr. Pollen.
There's not been a, not been a.
I've got an issue with, there again, the animal problem. I've got, I've got three dogs and three cats. I'm going to spray my lawn this afternoon before it rains. Because if one of them gets Lyme disease, you're talking about big bucks. I know some people with Lyme disease right now and ticks are a problem. When I, at night, I've got six friends that come in my front yard, deer. And they, they have, they have ticks. And if one of those dogs or cats gets a tick or something, you're talking about disease. So I have a problem with the tall grass, plus the children. I mean, children going through, they're getting a tick on them, that's a problem.
It's a long time, I know there's, I have one neighbor that's like that, that, you know, it's not cut. I mean, if you give it another month, there'll be snakes and everything from the.
Snakes and rats.
Let me add something to this, Mr. Pollen. If I'm correct, if a violation was sent out today, they have an X number of days to correct that violation before any punitive action, correct?
Right, they first got to notice the violation, the ten-day window to correct the issue, then we re-inspect it. If at that point it hasn't been corrected, then we will send out a citation.
You know how many calls I get for somebody doesn't have their grass cut? I mean, they chew my ear off, what are you going to do about this house next to me with high grass? I keep my grass cut.
Yeah, I think the premises of this idea was brought up for pollination. You know, it wasn't just to allow high grass and weeds throughout the community, the idea was for pollination and butterflies and so on and so forth.
Well, I'm, I'm not against butterflies, but. By any means.
I feel better already.
You can print that, Mary Jane, I'm not against butterflies.
Okay, we had a first and a second, so any other discussion? All in favor, so that's, now what's that date?
I just said after the first full week of June.
All right, all in favor of this?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
I'll, I'll vote in favor.
All right. All right, we'll do that then, all right. And moving on, we'll get into our old business. Item A.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Repealing Orders Number One Eighty-Four Series of Twenty Twenty Four, Which Authorized A Contract Between the City of Ashland and Light Center Prizes, Inc. For The Demolition Of Property Located At One Two One Three Gallagher Drive For The Department Of Community And Economic Development.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
I like the summary, I like the summary.
The summaries that you've added are very helpful.
Here they are. Item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing And Approving Change Order Number One Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky And CTP, Inc. For The Ashland Senior Center Storefront Rehabilitation Project Increasing The Contract In The Amount Of Two Thousand Three Hundred Ninety-One Dollars And Forty-Five Cents For The Department Of Community And Economic Development.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending The Job Description For The Position Of Captain In The Department Of Police Of The Classification And Compensation Plan As Adopted By Ordinance Number Thirty-One Series Of Twenty Twenty Three As Previously Amended.
Some move? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Item D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Of The City Of Ashland, Kentucky Repealing Ordinance Number One Fifty-One Series Of Twenty Twenty Three As Previously Amended, Which Established The Ashland Conference Center Advisory Committee For The City Of Ashland, Kentucky.
Some move? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Of The City Of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing And Directing The Mayor To Execute An Addendum To The Purchase Agreement Between The City Of Ashland, Kentucky And The Paramount Arts Center, Inc. Permitting The Paramount Arts Center, Inc. To Continue Operating, Continue Operating And Leasing The Theater Through December Thirty-One, Twenty Twenty Five.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Of The City Of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing And Approving Change Order Number One Between The City Of Ashland, Kentucky And Everett J. Prescott, Inc. For The Installation And Insertion Valves For The US Twenty-Three Waterline Replacement Project Decreasing The Contract Amount By Six Thousand Six Hundred And Twelve Dollars And Sixty-Five Cents And Increasing The Contract By Hundred And Thirty-Nine Days To June Five, Twenty Twenty Five For The Department Of Engineering.
Some move? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Of The City Of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing And Directing The Mayor To Execute An Agreement Between The City Of Ashland, Kentucky And HDR Engineering, Inc. For Engineering Services For The Optimization And Growth Distribution System Modeling Project In The Amount Not To Exceed Two Hundred And Twenty-Two Thousand One Hundred And Twenty-Eight Dollars For The Department Of Utility Operations.
Some move? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Of The City Of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing And Approving Change Order Number Three A, Project Item Number Nine Dash Two Four Four And Change Order Number Three B, Project Item Number Nine Dash Three O Seven Between The City Of Ashland, Kentucky And Howard Excavation, LLC For The Winchester Avenue Improvements Project Increasing The Contract In The Amount Of Four Hundred And Forty-Nine Thousand One Hundred And Thirty-Nine Dollars For The Department Of Engineering.
Some move?
Second.
I would just note that's an increase of seven-plus percent of the original contract price.
Yep. Lot of money. So I have a first.
I think you've got a first and a second.
There is a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, any other discussion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to reclaim my time from earlier now to talk about this. With all due respect to the folks that brought this idea to Ashland, and I know they had the best of intentions. I know them and I know they wanted to revitalize the downtown, I get that. And from an elevated position, a grown, if you would, this project looks really good. But when you get down to earth and you see lawsuits, you see cost overruns, it's my opinion, not this board's, my opinion, it's about an inch from being a disaster. This is unbelievable. You've heard me state before, this is an eight million dollar investment in the downtown. When I think of people, employers, government entities investing eight million dollars, you have to look for some sort of return on your investment. I don't see it here, I don't see the return yet. And maybe, maybe I'm talking too early, maybe it will pan out and do great. I just don't see it yet. This project won an award. Now let that sink in a second, this project won an award.
For engineering.
Yeah, and maybe we should start calling it the award-winning Winchester Avenue Project. I think that's what I'm going to start doing, it's the award-winning Winchester Avenue Project. One of my close family members said that during the holiday period, they would look out toward Winchester Avenue and they'd see the city Christmas lights, the snow flurries. It looked like a poster, a postcard, looked great. This year, the only green I saw at all was the money we keep throwing at this. That's the only green I saw in downtown. We've got two projects coming up that dwarf this one. One is four times the amount, the other one's, I don't know, ten or twelve times the amount. I sincerely hope we've learned some very valuable, expensive lessons from the award-winning Winchester Avenue Project. Because I don't think we can make those kind of mistakes again. We have to have some oversight and it's a lot of pressure on our city manager, on Mr. Hall, other city leaders. We've got to improve on the oversight and I appreciate you giving me time.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right. We'll move to our consent agenda.
A resolution of the City Of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting, Authorizing And Approving The Course Of Action Presented By The City Manager On The Items Appearing On The Consent Agenda For The Regular Meeting Of The Board Of City. agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of April 24, 2025.
This is our chemical meeting.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion or deletions? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Item B.
Think we're on new business, Mayor.
What? Oh, God, what I do?
I'm trying to force, I'm trying to read these names.
Yeah, all these. Well, I'll move it over. There we are. All right, item A for new business.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CJ Hughes Construction Company, Inc., for the Carr Street, Packard Avenue, and Iroquois Avenue Sanitary Sewer Line Replacement Project, decreasing the contract in the amount of $46,399.25 for the Department of Engineering.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Brentag Mid-South, Inc., for the purchase of powdered activated carbon at a price of $1.19 per pound, hydroflow solistic acid at a price of $3.39 per gallon, and sodium hypochlorite at a price of $1.8625 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? I, I like all the decreases in there. Um, there are some increases, but, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Kim Wright Incorporated for the purchase of potassium permanganate at a price of $2.12 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Sitco Water for the purchase of aluminum sulfate at a price of $1.761 per gallon and sand at a price of .107 dollars per pound for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with the Vonik Corporation for the purchase of parasitic acid at a price of seven, I'm sorry, .797 dollars per pound for the Department of Utility Operations, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second? Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Palladine, Inc., for the purchase of liquid polymer for the water treatment plan at a price of $17.114 per gallon, and for the wastewater treatment plan at a price of $15.308 per gallon, and polymer cateionic at a price of $2.41 per pound for the Department of Utility Operations, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Univar Solutions, USA, Inc., for the purchase of liquid caustic soda at a price of $1.077 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Usalco LLC for the purchase of polyaluminum chloride at a price of $3.2814 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with King's Daughters and Sons, the subrecipient of $9,986 from the Community Development Block Grant Program for a fence replacement project.
Some move?
Just, any second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item J.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Tri-State Construction for the King's Daughters and Sons Fence Replacement Project in the amount of $9,986 for the Department of Community and Economic Development to be paid from the Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item K.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Ci- the Kentucky Combined Sewer Overflow Coalition, of which the City of Ashland is a member, and Strand Associates, Inc., and the law firm of English, Lucas, Priest, and Owlesley Regarding Regulatory Approaches to Terminating Long-Term Control Plans with the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet in an amount not to exceed $16,250.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item L.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an application for the Kentucky Fire Commission FY 2026 Training Facility Grant in the amount of $30,000 and acceptance, and upon acceptance of the award of the grant for the Ashland Fire Department.
Some move?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item M.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute and submit a grant application to the Commonwealth of Kentucky Energy and Environmental Cabinet, Division of Abandoned Mine Lands, AMLR, 2025 Economic Revitalization Program, to govern the construction of Ashland Conference Center Abandoned Mine Land Economic Revitalization Project, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland any and all documents associated with the grant.
Some move?
Second.
First and a second, discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any other need to come before the board? All right.
Mayor, we would, I would ask for an executive session to update you on property acquisition.
Okay, a motion to go into executive session to discuss acquisition of property.
I'll remove in a second.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All discussion? All in favor? All in favor?